Okay, we're gonna begin. I'd like to call the February 8th, 2024 Sir City Planning Board meeting to order. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I also need approval for December 14th, 2023 minutes.
I make a motion to approve the December 14th minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Also need approval for the January 11th, 2024 minutes.
Make a motion to approve the January 11th minutes.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public comment?
We do not.
Okay, Amy, would you like to start with her first?
Yes, ma'am. So first on the agenda tonight, we have the Tom LLC annexation. The town council has requested that the planning board review an annexation petition to recommend an appropriate zoning classification. The subject property is on the south side of NC 210 and is along the southern property line of Magnolia Reserve subdivision. So we have the vicinity map in here for your use. You may remember this when we redid the Magnolia Phase 7 street layout, we talked about this possible annexation and the fact that that street layout change was to incorporate this property into that future, into that subdivision. So staff is recommending that this be zoned R10. That is in alignment with our coastal residential area in the comprehensive land use plan. It also matches the existing Magnolia Reserve subdivision. They have the R10 and then they have the R10 CZ1 that has the five-foot side setbacks. We're recommending the regular R10 with the traditional seven-and-a-half-foot side setbacks. And the applicant did not put anything in his application, but based on conversations is okay and in agreement with the regular traditional R10 zoning. So we are asking that the recommendation of R10 go to council for the annexation hearing next, I believe it's gonna be next month.
I got a question. Do they have the right to use these two private roads?
Which two private roads, sir?
Once it come out on RA King Drive.
Currently, they are. With the annexation, though, it would be tied officially into Magnolia Reserve and we'd utilize the Magnolia Reserve roadway.
Well, I don't see that shown on the drawing here, so that's why I was asking. I don't see a connection.
Just a couple of planning board meetings ago, we made the change to the master plan for Magnolia Reserve to allow for that connection. So they took one of the cul-de-sacs out and made it a through street so that it'll go into this. And there is one lot, you can see, that's already in that subdivision, and it will not be coming in as a part of it, it's the surrounding property.
I say block.
Yes, sir. So these are already, this is already a subdivision out in the county. It's already been cut into lots. They will be redoing, if it comes into the town, they'll be redoing it to meet our subdivision ordinances, and then more access through Magnolia Reserve will be in addition to them.
Question remains the same, though. Do they have permission to use the two private roads?
It's an existing subdivision that accesses those roads now.
I know.
So the county would have made that determination when they allowed that subdivision to go in through RA King. So it's a platted county subdivision.
You gonna take the county's word for it, huh?
And from, with the annexation, they're not requesting the use of those county roads. They'll be coming through the other roads, so...
Saying that, but you know, human nature means they will use them.
Potentially.
Yeah.
If you're going down, if you're going down that way, but if you're coming out to 210, more than likely, this is, that is through a dirt road that is very twisty-turny and not great, where this will take you straight out of, nice paved road to 210.
Where allocation is there for them?
No, sir.
Standard answer.
I can go through the process if you'd like again, but I believe you all pretty familiar with it. And this zoning does not grant them a waitlist. They have to get design plans, come back through TRC, y'all, and planning board, and they're always away from that.
They not even on the list yet?
No, on the list for months.
Just curious.
That area is currently zoned RP, and it'll be...
Yes, sir. It's the county designation. Again, I'm just asking that y'all vote on a recommended zoning. Staff is recommending R10. If you feel something else would be more appropriate, now would be the time to have that conversation. But we have to provide a recommended zoning to council.
Magnolia Plantation, Magnolia Reserve is R10.
Magnolia Reserve is R10, yes, sir.
A motion, please, to recommend R10 zoning.
Make a motion.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Frankie, are you going to recuse yourself?
They voted. Sheila, did they vote?
Yes.
Are we good? Okay. Oh, no, we gotta do that next, we're not there yet.
So, next on the agenda is the Mill Creek Road project. So I'm gonna ask Mr. Frankie Williams if he would like to recuse himself from the meeting.
I will.
I think we have to vote to allow him to be recused?
Oh, okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
I can get you if you would like.
Got a quorum still?
Hey, Amy.
The next item before you tonight is the major subdivision. The applicant is Four Oaks Capital Development LLC. The engineer is Norse and Tunstall Consulting. The acreage is about 25.82 acres. The proposed name is actually the Oaks at Mill Creek, and this would be a single-family development. As you can see on your screen, or on the screen over there, it is currently zoned R5 and was annexed into town a few years ago. It was going to be the sister kind of site to the existing Poplar Branch subdivision. The original developer began working through the process of designing this phase. Since that time, the original developer has decided not to move forward with the project. Four Oaks Capital Development LLC is requesting approval of this through the major subdivision process. The attached site plan proposes a single-family subdivision consisting of 67 lots. The project as designed meets the zoning requirements for property zoned R5. A zoning and location map is in your packet for your use, and also on the screen for those of you at home. The proposed development is located on Mill Creek Road, which is an NC DOT-maintained road. The project does not meet the threshold for completing a traffic impact analysis. However, the NC DOT will require the applicant to complete a driveway permit. As a part of this process, the NC DOT will assess the need for any roadway improvements at the new road connection. The site plan also proposes connecting to the existing town-maintained street, Summer Ducks Drive. A stubout to the property line was provided as a part of the Poplar Branch subdivision approval in 2014 with the intention of connecting to this property in the future. The applicant will provide sidewalks along the subdivision's streets, as well as the frontage on Mill Creek Road. Pedestrian easements will be provided for any sidewalk that is not located within dedicated street right-of-way. The town of Sir City will provide both sewer and water for the subdivision. The subdivision will be placed on the town sewer capacity waitlist until sewer capacity is available. The development will be served by Jones Onslow EMC. The streetlights will be provided by Jones Onslow in accordance with our town standards. The development will receive a stormwater permit from the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality for the treatment of its stormwater. The wetland delineation will be provided to the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for determinations. The attached site plan does not propose any fill in wetland areas. From other TRC review, the development will consist of roads that are built to town standards. The development will provide roadway width and turn radii to accommodate the town's future apparatus. There is one, like widening of the road that does not show the fire hydrant, but the engineer is aware and that fire hydrant will be added, so we're not missing a fire hydrant. It's not on this plan, but it will be on there before it goes to council. Also, the site plan is required to have open space. They have provided on Monday, Monday of this week, they provided an additional site plan that showed the easement access to all of the natural area in the back that will be undisturbed, and will be natural area that the HOA owns and the community can utilize. So staff recommends approval of the subdivision as submitted. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does this already go through TRC, or is that next?
No, it's already been through TRC. The design of this project started four, five years ago?
2009.
Longer? 2009. So it already had a pretty good base before it came to us, so it came through TRC. They added a few additional things to make sure it met our ordinances.
That was really fast.
He meant 2015 is when it came through, but...
They get mixed up in my head, I'm sorry.
It's been around for a while as an R5 subdivision.
Does the applicant own this property?
I think that we're in the due diligence phase of this, so if it doesn't get approved, then we're in the due diligence, and they wouldn't necessarily move forward with the purchase.
Amy, is the wetland, not the wetland, but the stormwater runoff area up in the upper-right-hand corner of that, out by the creek?
That is the, so you see down here on the, can you see my mouse? You see where, on the bottom right is where they're proposing it away from the wetland area. That will be finalized.
Okay, so this is, all right.
So has it been delineated or not?
It has been delineated. The size of the stormwater pond will be finalized during the stormwater permitting process.
So it's already been delineated and Army Corps is already verified?
It's been delineated a couple of times, yeah, but it has recently been delineated.
Does this place them on the waitlist for sewer?
Yes, sir. So was, well, y'all will make a recommendation, council will make a decision. If council decides to approve, then, then yes, it will go on the waitlist.
And there's room for them in the upcoming swath?
Yeah, I was just doing to double-check my calculations. Originally, we were planning to have, this is good news, but originally we were gonna have 150,000 coming online in August. I just issued a change order two days ago to bump that up to 202,000, so we'll have more coming in August than we thought.
Nice.
We are on track with that. This with the waitlist would take 73,000, leaving, whatever, 200,000 minus 76, 73 is...
What number would this place them on the list?
This would be number eight on the list. But I got a lot of single-family homes on the list.
What are their lot sizes?
So with R5, they are a minimum of 5,000 square feet, which is similar to the property next door.
So will they be utilizing, will they be going through the existing neighborhood to do all this construction, or will they put their road in?
They'll have to, they'll start and put their road in first. That connection will just be there for the cross-connection requirements. It is currently a cul-de-sac.
So it'll actually be connected? It's not like a emergency thing only, or it's all the time? It's like one big neighborhood?
It should be. That is a town, a town right-of-way, so we actually, that's our right-of-way. It's not a private street or whatnot, so we will be requiring that connection.
But it won't be used for construction traffic?
That's a good question. So it'll be blocked off while it's being constructed, or...
The connection there does not exist today, so they would have to come in and build that connection, and that would be, you know, you'd start at the front and kind of work your way in or out. The way the cul-de-sac currently sits, there's gonna have to be a little bit of tie-in work, so we're gonna have to work that out, so that won't be ready to go immediately at day one.
Oh, where the pre-existing cul-de-sac is? I got you.
Yeah, because that has to be torn out somewhat, because they're...
It's like a dead end right now, it's not even...
Yeah, but it's around, you know, cul-de-sac, so that'll become a through street, you know?
So who pays for the modification of the cul-de-sac?
The developer will.
In the adjacent property?
No, the person doing the tie-in. It's their tie-in work.
I see.
So they'll have to tie into it and make that an acceptable tie-in.
Does that change the lots that are on that cul-de-sac? Or does that work?
That's what I was wondering. That's very strange.
No, hold on, I'll pull up.
They gain?
Yes, I was wondering, yeah. Your right-of-way would change.
And so you're saying that the developer of the old neighborhood has to do those modifications?
The developer of the new neighborhood.
I got you.
The current developer would have to tie it in, so they would have to do the modifications. Where this one gets a little bit tricky is that some of the asphalt may not be within our right-of-way, it may actually be in people's yards. So that's where we're gonna have to work out exactly how we're gonna make that tie-in. Chris, can they see my screen?
No, did well on second.
Thanks, you're the best. So if you look over here on your screens, you can see the red lines that you can lightly see. Those are our property lines, so as you can see, this bit of asphalt up here. Do you want me to go point to it? Can you see my mouse at all?
I can see it, I just, how does that developer go and modify a private property?
We will either look at removing the cul-de-sac altogether, or just coming out the backside basically with a road.
Just leave it as is?
And leaving that asphalt in. And that's where the homeowners could potentially work with them if they wanted it gone for some reason. That is something that will have to be worked out.
And how do you tie in the sidewalk?
The sidewalk...
Be strange.
Yeah, where? That's gonna take a little bit more, the connection has to be made.
Question since that's private property.
Well, the asphalt part is not private property.
Yeah, if I was a homeowner, I'd be very interested in what you were doing to my front yard.
The road itself is not private property. They have some...
That red line, that's not private property?
They have some asphalt that is on there.
So they will have to modify a private property.
Depending on how we...
Mouse is...
You see your mouse where the red line is cutting through the cul-de-sac?
Like where that car is parked, that white one right there on the bottom side is on private property. So when that was built, the, and this is all looking at GIS, there will have to be some survey information on that to determine, you know, the actual of it. But we would have to look at exactly how we want to do that final tie-in. It may be that we stripe it. We can always go in there and stripe what's outside, and stripe it in a manner that it's no longer part of the roadway.
You mean the town?
Yes.
We, the engineer, when they figure out exactly how they're gonna do it, we could stripe, so it's a 20-foot road, and put gore area on each side of it and stripe it as non- roadway, and we could stripe as a part of the plan, stripe a sidewalk through there, and then leave what's in that.
Moderates that fight between the homeowner and this developer. The town is involved with that, or...
The town is involved in it with it because we're the one requiring the connection. This was always a connection, it was always a platted connection.
I get that, it should be connected, it's just...
Seems like this ought to be a little bit further defined before we approve.
It's definitely an unusual situation there.
The homeowners must know about it, right?
I mean, if you ask any homeowner, if you ask any homeowner, they're gonna promise you that the realtor said the property next to them was never gonna be developed.
Yeah, I doubt the realtor knew that the cul-de-sac was on private property. That should have been a dead-end stub.
Most people probably actually assume that that's not even their property out there.
That's what I'm saying, they have no idea, there's no way. The town's gonna get a call on that, especially when you come ripping up their front yard and stuff. What do you think, David? You seen this before?
I don't think, I mean, you're talking about needs to be more defined, but they're gonna have to do what they have to do, and they know that, to move forward with the project once it's approved by the town.
We can do one of two things, or three things, or four things, but one of those things is you can send it back for additional information to staff, or you can say that that has to be tied down prior to it being submitted to the council agenda, so it wouldn't come back through you, but it would have to be tied down better before it would be able to move forward to council agenda. You could recommend approval as is, or you could recommend denial, so there's four, you know, kind of options. If you want to see it again, then you would send it back to staff, and we'll go through it. If you want to let council hammer that out, then just say that, you know, before, the point of planning board sometimes is to really talk through things and make sure that everything's been seen and thought about. So if you just want to say it can't, if this needs to be resolved prior to going to council, we don't need to see it again, that's fine as well.
Out of property? Like what's the resolution of that, if it's simple?
Theoretically, I mean, it really depends on how the homeowner wants to be. Theoretically, you could cut it at the property line and build a road the way that the road should be if the homeowner does not want to work with the developer, in hopes that the, my hope would be that they would want to get that asphalt out of their yard and get some, you know, some grass back in some area.
Where the basketball court is?
Could, I have not ridden out there lately, but there is a chance. Cul-de-sacs tend to be basketball courts.
I would think the property owners would definitely like to get the asphalt out of the way in their yard. Increase, they would walk in the back door sort of getting bigger plot.
Unless they use it for additional parking, like we saw.
Yeah, instead of parking on the cul-de-sac, they'd park in their yard.
We can work with the applicant to get... We can work with the applicant to get a more clearly defined connection, um, prior to taking it to council.
This is something the planning board ought to have worked out, and because this is not the last time this is gonna happen.
Yeah, I thought it's been ongoing for years, like you said. I'm surprised this hasn't been hashed out if it's already been through TRC, you know? I was surprised it went through TRC that quickly, honestly. I thought it took like twenty-one days or something. My project's never seemed to move that fast through TRC, that's for sure.
This one had already been through TRC previously, so it was almost at the design point. We were just going back and, and getting it back to, to what it needs to be. They had already checked ninety-five percent of the boxes prior to bringing it to TRC.
Modification to private property, I guess they slipped that one.
Will modify, they will modify what's in the town's right-of-way. Um, it will be up to the private property owner to work-
They really don't have to touch the private property. They could just-
It could easily be striped, so that the road is there using like a gore area on each side. And then you wouldn't main, you wouldn't change any drainage, you wouldn't change any driveways. It would just be a striped roadway through there. If they wanted it torn out, then that's something that if-
So currently, there is no plan to deal with the cul-de-sac?
Not a defined plan on how the tie-in is gonna occur.
Pretty obvious on this site plan, it's running right through the cul-de-sac. Can you see the big bubble around it? I'm just wondering what those four homeowners right there are gonna say when they come calling the town.
There's the property line going up to the, so-
You're not gonna have to do it.
Rather than to the cul-de-sac there, is that wrong?
I would have to look and see. There may be, uh, temporary easements on those properties that could be given back to them for the removal.
Go back to the other drawing you had there, though.
Yes, sir.
Where did this drawing come from? The developer, the old developer?
Kick the can down the road? Just my opinion. Don't you agree?
I do agree.
Mike, I would ask you to keep your comments down. We're on public. Thank you. I didn't like your comment about TRC.
Just surprised.
Keep your comments to yourself.
I make the motion, we table it and send it back for review when it comes back to us.
We're not even ready for a motion. David's still looking.
The right-of-way is the straight line. My assumption is that that is an easement, or like a temporary easement. I will verify that.
On easements, on GIS?
Hold on.
Proper, rather than to the cul-de-sac cage.
Those are easements?
The easement is actually way bigger than what was actually put there.
So there's actually easement to allow, probably a utility easement for us to go and do work at town, that part taking those roads.
Yeah, so you see all of that, um, tan color that just popped up? That is all easement that allows for work to be done in that area. Sir?
That's not super accurate.
I wouldn't think so.
It's not.
No, it's not a hundred percent, but that's- What they've done is gone in and done a ten-foot or so easement on the backside of the right-of-way for utilities. Then they did the cul-de-sac easement. So we require that the cul-de-sac be a hundred foot. So that easement right there is a hundred foot, which is what's required by the ordinance. And then there's a ten-foot on the backside of that for utility maintenance. This is actually an undersized cul-de-sac by the paving that's in there. It should be almost as big as that circle that's shown where I've got measured. So our cul-de-sac should be ninety-six foot of pavement, and that as well under ninety-six foot of pavement, because what I have measured is a hundred and one feet.
They get power that just because it's a dead-end maybe?
Price can give some history. He's been here through a lot more than I have.
I apologize. I inspected this. Um, originally, that was supposed to be a straight-through with a temporary hammerhead. Along the way of construction, um, they tried to pull fast, changed the language. There was a misunderstanding and they made a cul-de-sac out of it. Uh, those town staff said, no, that will be a straight-through, and you know it's gonna be a straight-through. That's why we ensured that the sewer line was laid up and water was laid up. And you'll see, we caught the other one down the road. They tried to just, um, there's a misunderstanding on that one, too. Uh, and we made that one, made sure we caught that one time, make sure it's a straight-through.
Oh, here?
Yeah. That's why the cul-de-sac is the way it is. It's kinda like, okay, fire chief came out, that time was a different fire chief, and said, we can still make this work. Um, but when time comes, it's going straight-through. We're not gonna make you yank up the pavement because there's nobody connecting right now. That's why there's no cul-de-sacs on the other side. Could be, we're able to clear up the misunderstanding in time.
Right-of-way go up to the property line?
The right of-
Sufficiently wide?
The right-of-way that's shown is sufficient for through-street.
I'm at the curve of the cul-de-sac.
You look at the cul-de-sac over there, and can you see the light black line? So that line to the other light black line is what is required by ordinance for a cul-de-sac. So we apparently allowed them to do that in an easement versus an actual property. And then typically, on the outside of our right-of-ways, we have a ten-foot utility easement, or fifteen, but typically a ten-foot. Uh, that's how Magnolia Reserve, Waterside, they have easements for utilities on the backside.
Utility easement, and the same thing as in the, uh, egress easement.
So that's what I'm saying, between the black line and the houses, is the utility easement.
Okay. But I mean, when it butts this new property, is enough curve in that-
Theoretically, when it, if this road is fixed, there's no reason that those easements, depending on where the sewer-water line is laid through there, there's not a, those easements could potentially go away and you could get your property back.
I was just concerned about the joining property lines with the development, the property lines. Is there enough cul-de-sac arc? This twenty-foot wide, a button this other? You know, whereas, in my thought, it would be the cul-de-sac would have a flat place twenty-foot wide on that property line. If you follow my thought?
I'm not a hundred percent sure I do.
Well, the cul-de-sac's a circle.
Yeah, so like up here?
A circle in, a circle in a line kinda come together like that.
Mm-hmm.
Where it needs to be like that.
So there will probably be some grading that has to happen to-
Property rights.
I got you. The property line goes through the cul-de-sac straight. It's an easement that it's on. See, maybe I'm not getting what you're saying. But the property line, the actual property line is out, oop, I gotta look where, is here, and the easement line is back here.
For the first easement, and then there's a second easement behind that.
This is the property line that Jason property that they're developing.
Yeah, right here. Yes, sir.
Yeah. This property line here.
That's just the center line of the road shown here.
That's the center line of Summer Duck Road.
Yes, sir.
And this developer will have the right to come through here to the cul-de-sac as existing now.
Yes, because the town owns that.
Town owns-
We own-
It owns the red line.
We own, from this red line to this line, it's ours.
And all the way to the property line.
And all the way to the property line.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. It's a regular, I think it's a fifty-foot-
Regular, um, street right-of-way through there. Yeah, it's a fifty-foot street right-of-way through there with the additional easements for the temporary, um, cul-de-sac.
Any further discussion? Do I have a motion?
I don't have a problem with it.
Can we approve it and suggest or strongly encourage that they don't use that through road for all construction? I know you're saying they're not, but can we put that down in the plan?
It's not a conditional district.
Right.
Um, so we can't really add any conditions from a, um, from a logistical standpoint. It, it doesn't really make sense to use that, um.
I wouldn't be using it as a, for construction myself in building that.
And they have to connect the water and sewer lines to that neighborhood, so that will be all dug up when they connect. Not the cul-de-sac itself, but, uh, at the property line.
Yeah, sure.
So there'll be sewer-water connections through here?
Some point, I guess, contractor building a house in there could use that other line if it was blocked off for some reason. But it, physically to me, it doesn't make a lot of sense to be dragging by a bunch of houses when you wanna get to your job. I don't think that's anything we got any control over anyway.
I, I can't put that condition on them. I feel like they'll, they'll use their driveway entrance as, as the entrance going in. Um, they don't want to damage other stuff and be on the hook for doing that when they have a, a driveway they can just go right, right in.
Be responsible for any damage they did do to the others' division.
Within reasonable, yes. We would, the town would, there is some things in here that say you have to leave the streets. Whenever you get a permit, you have to leave the streets in the same condition that you found them. Um, so we would be able to talk to them and see, and potentially get, we've had some houses that, um, on Durham, they cut out a big portion of the road and went back and paved it because they broke off the edge of the pavement.
They sure did.
Mm-hmm. And it's, it's a nice patch. It's a really pretty patch. Um, but they did, they broke off a big chunk of road, and most of y'all probably know where it is, because it's a, it's a big, it's in front of two lots. Um, so we do have the ability to go back and say, you have to, to fix this. You agreed you would leave the streets, curbs, sidewalks, and something else in the manner that you found it.
I feel comfortable approving it after you talked us through this, but I agree, somehow this has to be conveyed to council without having this long discussion.
So you can recommend approval, um, with the details of this defined prior to going to council?
Okay. I make a motion to approve it with these details mapped out for coun, for council.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? It is approved.
On the ordinance, moving on to the ordinance update discussion, um, I know a couple of y'all have been making comments in there. Let me know. Oh, yeah, yeah. Will you go get Frankie? Um, if y'all could let me know if you're done and you have no comment, um, or if you plan on, on getting to it pretty soon. I've gotten a couple of other things from, um, from the consultant. I have not put them in there yet, because we're still kind of, I hadn't seen a lot come in on those other comments yet. So if you could just let me know if you're ready for that, that next, um, section, I would greatly appreciate it. If you do have any comments, uh, if you could go ahead and get them in. If you don't want to do the, um, electronic version, you can always send me the comments. Um, or if you have neat handwriting that's legible, you can just bring me the copy and I'll scan it in and, and send it to them that way as well.
My login's still not working. Can we look at it after the meeting?
Mm-hmm. Yep. But you have your hard copies, right? Okay. So once we get kind of a, like a wrap on what we've got originally, we'll start adding the next section. There's some environmental stuff, um, the sign stuff is coming up. So I do have some other stuff. Um, those who have been able to get in have seen Scott's been reviewing them, so code enforcement has been reviewing and making a lot of comments, um, this week. If you go in and you see his comments and you agree with them, um, please like them so that our, um, our consultant knows that we kind of, it's a consensus among us and it's not just my opinion, or Katrina's opinion, or Scott's opinion, or, you know, or whoever's. Um, so if you could do that, I would greatly appreciate it.
Any project updates, Amy?
So we are working through air projects. Um, we have a list of projects. We have a few that have been on the books, um, for, for quite a while. Uh, P twenty-two forty-six has been here since mid-twenty-two. We're waiting, still waiting. Um, that's Mobile Home Park. We are still waiting for, we've done an exempt plat on that that is gonna allow One Mobile Home to go ahead and go in there. I'm waiting for some additional information from Charles on that one. Um, the rezoning Royal Palm, I think, was more of a filler. I don't think that one's moving forward. Uh, the Mexican Restaurant is Agave Azul out here. I did get revised plans on the fifth, so we will, um, finish those and, and see if the revised plans have the information that we requested. It will be, it is four thousand nine hundred and something square feet, so it is under the threshold and will not come to y'all for a review. It will be a staff-level review. Um, terraces is a final plat. Those usually go to council. There were some paving issues out there that we're trying to get corrected, and once those are corrected, we'll move forward on it. Mill Creek, you heard tonight. Um, the proximity is the other side of the Bishop Creek. Um, they have submitted TRC plans and will be on the next TRC agenda. Uh, Waymouth Bats is cutting off another one-acre lot beside all the other one-acre lots that he has cut off. So y'all will be hearing that in the very near future. Um, the Rochelle Property on JH Bats, I'm assuming most of y'all know where that is. Um, that has a rezoning request in, um, we will talk about it this month at TRC. Rezoning requests typically go to one TRC, just so that I can get comments from all the staff to see if there are concerns with the rezoning request, and then it goes to planning board and council. Um, and the proximity is actually listed on here twice because they did like a concept, and now they've come back with the fully, um, engineered plans. Um, the Accolade, I'm sure y'all have all seen, is moving forward, um, very quickly. The Hines Property, I've not heard anymore since we did that, um, development or that approval. Um, Evolve Out on Seventeen has not come forward yet. I've heard that they should be submitting within the next couple of months. They have recently switched engineers, um, so that may have set them back just a touch. And then Applewood Trace has also reached out to start some of their submittals. They hope to start in the March, um, timeframe.
Calvin Davis Property on two-ten.
That's a good question. There's a lot of interest in it.
Evolve Through, or?
Um, I don't know yet. There's interest in it. I- Yes, and I think there's a pretty high-
Sniff Davis?
Sniff Davis, yeah.
They're still talking to me.
Still, still in the works?
They're still talking to me, Dave. They're looking at some alternative designs, um, but I can't, uh, sign off on them right now. I'm waiting on, um-
So that one is, is still out there. We'll see. Um, there's been some talk of some big properties off of Watts Landon has, have come out with some questions. They've been quiet for the last few months, at least with me.
Yeah.
Other than that, I can't think of anything right now.
Evolve, but-
Well, they're waiting, because they switched engineers.
Okay.
Uh, they hope to submit in the March-ish timeframe, but the, depending on how it falls with the proximity, depends on how much additional sewer capacity we have available.
Proximity comes, will close down for years. Just honest.
Just three hundred and ninety-nine homes, that's same size as a Tora Creek, I mean, half of what it turns the capacity.
It's a, it's an apartments and townhomes, but it's the- It's an apartments and townhomes, but it's the same number of units as...
Proximity is the Phase 3 of Bishop's Creek, I guess.
I don't know why they renamed it on the other side of Coretta, but they did. Because it's the same developers and the same engineering team, but...
I don't have one of the actual terms of units. It's the same size as Applewood.
Remind me what's going on besides Smith's family dental.
It's an office building. It was approved when we did Smith's family dental. It had both of them.
So it'll have different office spaces, or multiple?
Yes, they have office spaces.
And the Quicklube that was gonna go beside the Dollar Tree.
Take five.
Take five. We keep getting random permits, like for signs and for a heater, but we haven't actually gotten a site plan yet. So I keep telling them, "We have to do the site plan before we can move forward with that." So I'm assuming that's still in the works. Sheila and I talk to them quite often and tell them, "We gotta have a site plan," but they don't seem to be listening, so... That could pop up at any moment, I guess. I guess about it. So that's my update.
Any additional comments? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
You want to stay? I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned.